Ian Fettie?
Yes.
Mayor Finan?
Yes, this is accepted and placed on file. Please go ahead and call the first council bill.
Council Bill number 2020-90, a resolution.
Glenn, hold on a minute. Madam Mayor, I move that we consolidate council bills 2020-90 and 2020-91.
Second.
Can you please call the roll for consolidation?
Councilmember Stock?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bruno?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Kyle's? Councilmember Kyle's?
Yes.
Ian Fettie?
Yes.
Mayor Finan?
Yes, we are consolidated. Please call the two bills.
Council Bill number 2020-90, a resolution approving a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for a regional assistance to firefighters grant. Council Bill number 2020-91, an ordinance amending the annual budget for the general fund.
The first council bill would authorize city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to manage a regional grant for 10 Champaign County agencies in the amount of $207,030.24, plus required agency matching funds of $20,703.2 for a total of $227,733.26 through 2020. Assistance to firefighters grant will assist area agencies with personal protective equipment expenditures resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. The City of Champaign Fire Department will receive $78,671.50 and as required as a condition of the grant, contribute matching funds equal to or greater than 10% of the federal funds awarded or $7,867.15. The contributing matching funds will come from the fire department's operating budget. The purpose of the second bill is to amend the fiscal year 2020-2021 annual budget by $227,733.26 for the projected expenditures and grant revenue in the general fund. The grant revenue of $227,733.26 will be distributed as defined by the 2020 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Terms and Conditions of the Reward. The remainder of the cost share revenue and expenditures will be allocated in accordance with the memorandum of understanding for the regional grant. Are there any technical questions? Are there any audience members? Councilmember Bruno?
Madam Mayor, I see no members of the audience with their hands raised.
All right, any council comment? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kyle's? I mean, sorry, councilmember Stock?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bruno?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Kyle's?
Yes.
Ian Fettie?
Yes.
Mayor Finan?
Yes, councilball passes eight to zero, please call the next bill.
Council Bill number 2020-92, a resolution approving a change order with Clark Deets, Inc. for the 2020 Concrete Street Improvements Project.
So moved.
Second.
This council bill authorizes the city manager to execute change order number one with Clark Deets, Inc. in the amount of $75,160 for changes in scope to the original engineering services agreement for the 2020 Concrete Street Improvements Project. The new contract amount, including change order number one, is $505,125. Are there any technical questions? Seeing none, are there any audience members?
Madam Mayor, I see none.
Are there any council members who wish to comment? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Stock?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bruno?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Kyle's?
Yes.
Ian Fettie?
Yes.
Mayor Finan?
Yes, councilball passes eight to zero, please call the last bill.
Council Bill 2020-93, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for the Champaign-Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System.
So moved.
Second.
The purpose of this council bill is to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Urbana for the Champaign-Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System, which continues to provide long-term post-closure care for a closed landfill previously operated jointly by the cities of Champaign and Urbana. Approval is recommended by CUS WDS Management Group. Are there any technical questions? Deputy Mayor Bruno, are there any members of the public with their hands raised?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is a member of the public.
Okay, so please state your name and city of residence and limit your comments to five minutes or less.
This is Bo Barber.
Hi, my name is Bo Barber. I think I'm a little confused on, well, I'm not here to comment on the council bill perhaps, but is there, there's going to be public meet, public comment, general comment at the end, right? I didn't see it in the agenda.
Correct.
Okay, I apologize, I'll wait till then.
All right, is there anyone else?
Nobody else.
All right, any council comment? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Stock?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bruno?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Kyle's?
Yes.
Ian Fettie?
Yes.
Mayor Finan?
Yes, councilball passes eight to zero. We are now at the point of our meeting for audience participation. If anyone wishes to address the council on any issue, please feel free to raise your hand, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to five minutes or less.
Madam Mayor, are you ready?
I am.
The first one I'll turn the microphone on for is Brian Dunn at 7:10 PM.
Brian Dunn, Champaign, Illinois. I saw on the news that a Champaign man was arrested with a completely nonviolent cannabis charge. We're still spending tax dollars to send another black man, a father of three, to prison for an amount of marijuana that is a drop in the bucket compared to what students are going to be bringing in with them. He faces six to 30 years for something that helped more than one of my friends pay their way through college. They didn't have to worry about getting arrested, though. When I'd go over to their place to play Scrabble, I didn't have to worry about the cops busting in when someone slid through for a deal. Because we, as white people, are policed differently, and it's so obvious that it hurts. It hurts more knowing that this is what the wages, equipment, and training we sink into the police department add up to. When we have more shootings now than we did in the entirety of last year, when we have parents scrambling for resources to homeschool their children during a pandemic, we're really dedicating untold resources to arresting, jailing, and prosecuting a black man for presumed intent to sell a legal substance just for selling it in the wrong way. We need to remove funding from our bloated, harmful police department, decrease their responsibility, and invest those funds in a proactively anti-racist way for supporting our community. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Lisa Wilson at 7:12 PM.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Wilson, I am a Champaign resident. I'm the executive director of the Refugee Center, which has been working with our Northeast Central Regional Intermediary for the Census 2020 and other community organizations in order to increase the response rate in hard-to-count communities. This group has been working together for 18 months towards achieving a significant increase in the self-response rates in Champaign County. I'm speaking to you this evening to encourage every council member to reach out to your constituents and ask them to answer the census. Currently, our self-response rate in Champaign County is 66.3%. Only two-thirds of the estimated population of Champaign County answer the census on their own. While census enumerators now go door-to-door to help increase the overall response rate, it is a struggle. Some of the lowest response rates in Champaign County are in the City of Champaign. For example, track number two with a response rate of 46.3% is from the IC tracks to Wright Street and north of Park Avenue to I-74. Track number 3.01 has a response rate of 31.6%. That's the tracks to Wright Street, Springfield to John. Similarly, track number 3.02, 39.5%, that's the tracks to Wright Street, University to Springfield. These are primarily campus areas and the areas north of campus going towards the Shadowwood area and the area around Wesley Park and north towards 74. We need help getting the response out in these areas, our response rate is abysmal. And this is not counting the university group housing has already been counted. This is student apartments who have not responded. Unfortunately, the COVID pandemic reduced our ability to conduct meaningful outreach in the hard-to-count community. In addition, we were unable to set up our assistance hubs where residents could come to ask questions in person about the census and speak to someone in their native language about any concerns they had regarding confidentiality of census information. COVID greatly impacted census field operations across the nation. In March of 2020, the Census Bureau decided to suspend field operations to ensure the safety and wellness of their employees. The field operation suspension has led the Bureau to postpone many field operations such as group quarters and the mobile questionnaire assistance program. Due to these field operations being postponed, the non-response follow-up operation is now under more pressure for getting a complete census count. At the request of the administration, the Bureau had extended the census count to October 31st due to the pandemic. Now, the administration has reversed course and has set a deadline of September 30th for the self-response period. Clearly, we're facing an uphill battle. While our state and local government is supportive, our federal government is using the census as a political tool. Already, the 2020 response rates are behind the 2010 rates because of the deep impacts of COVID-19, especially for communities that have been undercounted for decades. The Census Bureau is entering the door-to-door counting operation with the lowest response rates in recent memory. The rush to end the census self-response period puts Champaign County in even more danger as we are at risk of losing $560 million in federal funding over the next 10 years. According to the Northeast Central Illinois intermediary for the 2020 Census, Lynn Steinberg, Champaign County was undercounted by 40,000 people in 2010. Each person undercounted cost this county $1,400 in federal funds. Over 10 years, this amounts to $560 million lost for our schools, roads, healthcare, police and fire departments, and other critical services we all rely on. It is vital for our communities to get counted in the 2020 census. I urge all of you to help increase the self-response rate in the City of Champaign in the six weeks we have left to be counted. Thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor, the next member of the audience is Maurice Hayes at 7:16 PM.
How you guys doing tonight, mayor and council members? I am Maurice Hayes, I'm the executive director of HV Neighborhood Transformation. We are an organization geared towards preventing the violence that goes on in our communities and ending the gun violence that happens with our young people. I just want to make clear tonight in this meeting to all you guys who are paying attention that HVNT is in no way involved with the destruction of police departments. HVNT is nowhere involved in any destruction of city property. But what I will ask that you guys do is really to start considering bringing some of those necessary resources into these high-hope areas where my organization tackles. As you guys know, a couple of days ago, there was a death of a young man by the name of Christopher Kelly. When I had the interview yesterday, no one knew who he was. They didn't know his name, no one talked about it. And I don't want to get it to a point where our community looks at another young man's death as just another dead brother, another dead black man. So some of the resources that you guys have and have been talking about, I encourage you to start utilizing some of those resources in the neighborhoods that are needed most. We are in those communities, we are fighting in those communities, and most of the time, we don't see anyone out there from the city council or from these groups that are empowered and positioned to help. So this is my plea to you guys directly. As we move forward to kind of try to combat some of this violence in our community, we ask that you guys provide some of the resources necessary to take the guns out of their hands and put something else in them. We need more jobs in these communities, we need more attention in the community, we need more attention to the people that suffer in these communities. And I ask the council members and the mayor to please provide some kind of relief for the families. We're not just a community of destruction, we're a community of hope, and we need people to believe in us and help us to achieve the same thing that most of the other communities in this area does. The campus is a great place, but Garden Hills is as well. Country Brook is as well, Sylvia and Walter is as well. So Gramercy Park is as well. So if we can give eye attention to these areas that we so desperately love, we ask that the people that's empowered and positioned to give that same energy to these same high-hope areas. Separate us from any of the radical things that you guys see that is not us. When you see us, you see what our movement is about. You see that we deal directly with the crime and the violence that affects our kids. So we just ask that you guys join hands with us and see how we can collaborate together to bring some kind of relief to this community, and I thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Sean Williams.
Good evening, council. My name is Sean Williams, and I come to you tonight in just support of our chief, Chief Anthony Cobb. I got started in this community through a community program after making it back from the military, starting a barber shop through a community collaboration for economic development program. Over those years, I saw the social, economic, and the police dysfunction that was going on within the city. That's what allowed me to get involved with the, with community work. Once I got involved with community work in 2009, after the death of Kiwan Carrington, I was asked to be a participant of CCAP, which we now know as Community Coalition. We also started Walkers One Station Adjustment. I was on a search committee for our new chief, and one of those conversations I had with our long-term city manager back then, Steve Carter, was that in order to build the relationship between the black community and our police department, let's bring in somebody that's from this community that's African-American, and I still hold on to that today. Chief Anthony Cobb has been doing a great job. I've spoken with a lot of members throughout this community, and we're in much support of him. We do not, the larger base of the African-American community, we did not agree with the looting. We did not agree with the defacing of the police department. We did not look upon that as a great ordeal. We have a lot of new players coming to the table. A lot of them don't have the guidance, don't have the history that we have. We spent a lot of work trying to get a lot of things done, and we don't want that to go away. We spent a lot of work trying to build this relationship with the African-American community and the City of Champaign, and we thank you for all the work that you guys are doing during this COVID season, and we thank God for the work that Chief Anthony Cobb has been doing with the law enforcement officers and the communication with the African-American community, thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Alan Axelrod at 7:21 PM.
Thanks, Tom Bruno, can you all hear me real quick?
Yes.
Thank you for responding. So I wanted to talk to the fact that activists are, more often than not, held to higher standards than establishment-beholden not-for-profits as well as at-will employees of the city. And I bring this up because there are inaccuracies in Chief Cobb's emotional statements. If there was indeed property damage, you would be quantifying it. That is the duty of the Champaign Township Assessor. I should be very interested in the Champaign Township Assessor finding out whether or not Chief Cobb was inexcusably lying to the public and whether or not Maurice Hayes, as well as the person providing him talking points audibly on the microphone, were doing so too. If your priority is the census, then maybe you should ask your employees to keep their emotions in check and write accurate press releases. The same organization they are attacking announced their 10-day, 10-demands, and tomorrow, they're helping with the census. Well done. You are lucky that the organization working on all of these things is more interested than helping their community than your comfort or even their own. I say this as somebody who was not there, but I also say that as somebody who has the wherewithal to understand what solidarity is and what class blindness is. If we are relying on any organization in this community to effect change, let it be the organization that made it untenable for a racist establishment to continue business, that made it so that there were racists outed in our community who not only believed in a hateful ideology but practiced it. There was a motorist who drove through a protest in less than 20 seconds than getting into his vehicle. Where's the results on that? There is a person who is a public employee who assaulted a black woman activist. Where are the results on that? We know what the difference is between establishment-beholden rhetoric and the difficulties that activist organizations face. And let's not pretend for any moment that these are exceptional circumstances. I will tell you what an exceptional circumstance is. An exceptional circumstance is Champaign being ranked 16th in the nation by Orkin for bedbugs. You increased your rank by seven places this year, yet the Realtor lobby doesn't seem to have a problem with that, do they? I think we need to be demanding more from our public at-will, that means immediately replaceable employees, as well as any organization that has structured themselves in the ill-informed not-for-profit model, which has been documentedly beholden to establishment interests for far too long. Anyway, hope you all have a good night. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next person is a telephone caller whose phone number ends in 336. Please state your name and city of residence. And phone caller, please state your name and city of residence.
Reverend T.A. Burks, 5009, Head Royal, Champaign. Madam Mayor, city manager, deputy mayor, and all council members. The Bible says in Romans 6:23, "The wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life." And I say that simply because that we are in a pandemic. And because we are in a pandemic and you have people who are tired, who are oppressed, who are angry, and who are upset. But one thing that we are very clear on is that there's a unified feeling as far as our chief of police, Anthony Cobb. And Anthony Cobb has been doing a great service to not only Champaign, but also Urbana. And since that is so, we feel that he is one to lead us into the future. We feel that he gives proper direction, and we feel that he cares not only for the community, but he cares for his fellow officers as well. And since that is so, the only thing I want to leave you with this evening is that he's doing a great job, and hats should be tilted off to him in that regard. Because that brother goes up against pressure each and every day. Pressures we don't even understand, but because we know him and have been knowing him, we know that he's doing a great job. So I would urge whoever wants to down this brother, whoever wants to ask for his resignation or anything of that nature, you are wrong, dead wrong. And since that is so, the community will give the chief of police our total support, and we pray that this council will do the same. So I thank you for your time, and I ask you, God, to guide you and lead you in strengthening in your endeavors. And that's all I have to say this evening. God bless and God keep you, and that heaven continues to be strong and long.
Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Yvette Glenn. Please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Dr. Yvette Connerly Glenn, I live in Richland, Mississippi. And I'd like to say good evening to each of you. Rita Connerly happens to be my sister, and I've been keeping abreast of everything that's happening in Champaign-Urbana as I lived in the CU community for most of my life. In fact, I went to school with Anthony Cobb. I grew up there and can say that I'm truly dismayed at the response of those in the professional roles and Caucasian members of the community. The alignment of words and images that suggest a negative connotation specific to professional roles is clearly immature. In these professional roles, individuals should be able to elevate beyond how they are depicted and received by society and community, given the greater concerns of the community. As defined by Webster's Dictionary, vandalism is a willful or malicious destruction or defacement of public or private property. To this end, the actions of Champaign County Anti-Racist Coalition were not of this intent. Further, it's quite obvious locally and beyond, there is a bigger issue at hand. This issue involves discriminatory practices and biases that do not align with acceptance and nurturing of a community that is working together for the good of all races and genders of individuals. What Anthony Cobb deemed as an active division by a small group truly is not that a division. It is a call for attention on issues that exist within the Champaign-Urbana community. Moreover, it is a request to define how best to meet the needs of all members of the community. In addressing systemic racism, these same professionals will need to remove their personal feelings about labels that have been placed upon them by society. Perhaps this is a wake-up call, a call to the numerous people and names that have been suggested. This could be a wake-up call especially for other races and other ethnic groups, or it could be a wake-up call to the injustices and malfeasance that has been experienced by people of color. In closing, what I would like to say is that I too have experienced racism in Champaign-Urbana community. These outlets that now exist for expression are much needed and development of key opportunities for discussion on collaboration and betterment of the community for all races, genders, ethnicities. Public officials must be reminded that any disparaging remarks are not meant to be taken personally, but instead, a reflection of the hurt and pain that has been experienced for many generations. Now is the time for these same public officials to consider changing the perspective and outlook and how the community needs to change and collaborative ways need to be identified to improve communication and outcomes. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to call on Emily Rodriguez at 7:31 PM. Sorry, that was on.
Oh, I'm myself, awesome, okay, cool. All right, so Emily Rodriguez, as you know, I reside in Champaign, I am the president of the Champaign County Sheriff. As you know, we are tapped to建立与邻居的关系, and we've built over the years the strong working relationships with both PCTB and the community. So I'm speaking tonight because when I saw the coverage of the hate and hateful words directed at, or at PCTBs that were directed at Chief Cobb, I was shocked, greeted, concerned, but I also knew that it was something that the state of TRS must understand better, we are to our mission. So I felt that it was part of my job to go out and So I felt that it was part of my job to go out and meet the Champaign County Anti-Racist Coalition. And they were talking at the Alma Mater, and I have to say, um, I, I was truly blown away. Um, this is a vibrant group of young activists. I can only describe the atmosphere as joyful. What struck me about this event was that they were reclaiming public spaces that they had been shut out, shut out from as young people of color in our city. I think we can acknowledge here that, uh, young people do have much to be angry about. And I also walked away convinced that these emerging groups deserve a safe space to walk through or to work through trauma, um, to learn how to organize, make mistakes. And headlines like those, um, in the News Gazette, I would say, uh, speaking as somebody, a member of the actively active community, um, is not an indictment, uh, of CCR, which may outweigh on the reputation of our community. I have to say, this is a signal to our active community that they really deserve more of our support and more of our resources and guidance. Um, I walked away convinced that we really must be protective of our talented and passionate young activists. But we know it sounds so cheesy, it sounds like we're using, but like they are our future. Um, they deserve that support and wisdom of established groups willing to come alongside them. And the city has our job, uh, to be that strong safety net that catches like flooding groups like this before a fall, hopefully, ideally, and allow them to bounce right back. So I encourage you, um, if you are concerned by the art at CPD or Alma Mater, um, as I was, I encourage you to go out and bid at them, um, in one of their, uh, events. It was nothing for a marchable, actually. Thank you.
Uh, the next person is Amy Hatch. Please state your name and city of residence.
Uh, Amy Lou Hatch, Champaign, Illinois. Uh, first of all, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak this evening. Thanks as well to Chief Cobb for his hard work and his reasoned calming statement about the events, uh, last Thursday evening. And also, thank you to all the local BLM organizers, protesters, and their allies for fighting for what I believe is right, for justice that would improve our community as a whole, in my opinion. In particular, I thank Rita Connerly, Justin Pucci Michael, and their group for making me welcome recently and for sharing their social justice work with me when I went down to the barber shop protest to introduce myself and ask them questions about what they were doing. Meeting them in the first place was sparked by seeing the viral video and ongoing commentary regarding a truck being driven into the group in what appeared to me like a hate crime similar to several others we've witnessed across the country. And then I saw no action to hold that, that white man accountable. I saw no action at all being taken by public safety departments on that, only action to curtail the protesters. No mention of the truck incident in mainstream media either, all of which I found extremely unsettling. So I took it upon myself to investigate. That is how I personally got involved. It saddens me to see many of the comments on the police and the city's statements. They read to me like a primer for understanding white privilege in the Champaign-Urbana community. Even our own Chief Cobb importantly pointed out to us that, and this is his quote, "What occurred Thursday evening was nothing more than an active division by a small group of individuals. We must be careful not to confuse this type of conduct with the necessary advocacy and activism to confront systemic racism locally." I don't speak for the chief, and yet it sounds to me like he may support the overall movement as I do, as many of my friends and family in Champaign-Urbana rightfully do. The inappropriate graffiti and property damage was the misguided actions of just one or a few of the predominantly peaceful protest group. Presumably, the police know who it was because they're building cameras and the police car scene driving by, and the fact that the police called one of the organizers Rita when the inappropriate graffiti was happening. She was on the other side of the building and went to look and stop it. Not to mention that at any time, the police could have easily exited the department themselves to police the event. They chose not to stop it. That appears to, like, consent to me in some ways. Perhaps they rightfully understand that property damage isn't as big or as serious of an issue as the much more destructive racial injustices that these protests are actually about. I wish for all of us to stop using incidents like Thursday night to try and invalidate the valiant work of an entire movement. It's become, it's unbecoming of our white population to do so frankly, and it smells to me of the very bias and racism that they're protesting. To those calling for individuals to be held accountable for these actions last Thursday evening, I sincerely hope that our calls for justice are universal. But in our desire for a just community, we will also be calling for the white man who intentionally drove his truck into a peaceful group to be held accountable. It is unlawful, to my knowledge, to use our vehicle as an assault weapon, and it's now been over three weeks since that incident, and nothing has been done. Nor are we discussing the multiple white men with guns who follow, watch, film, and try to physically intimidate and scare these protesters. Nor has there been much mention of Chief Cobb's own cousin, Kevin Cobb, harassing Rita and her group during the same three weeks the chief has been on vacation. Kevin has on-again, off-again claimed he was working for the CPD or not affiliated to them or whatever. Affiliated or not, it's no doubt designated to intimidate and suppress the protesters. Do we as a community set to, pardon me, do we support two sets of justice? One for whites and another for black citizens? I certainly hope not, and I do not. All of the negative comments and calls to hold only protesters accountable for their actions are deeply disappointing to me. As is retired Chief Finney's statement to the News Gazette. "Statements like these demonstrate to me how much more prevalent white privilege and racism is in our community than I ever believed. We as a community must work together, come together, talk peacefully together to end this situation. One bad action does not validate denigrating an entire movement nationally or..."
Thirty seconds.
"Just as a few bad cops don't negate the work and dedication of the truly good cops that we do have. Uh, considering our black communities have been fighting for true equality for decades now, I think it behooves us to sit down and do this. I will continue to support Rita and the other organizers and protesters and their allies in what I now see as a very American and patriotic movement, Tea Party style. One, it's calling for racial justice and equality that our constitution already, already grants to them. I just ask you all, how much longer must they wait for that? Thanks for your time."
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next, uh, speaker is Paul Higgins at seven thirty-nine P M.
Uh, hello, Paul Higgins. I'm a resident of Champaign. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Mayor Finan and the city council members for listening to me. I was just curious about, um, what, what directives are being made from the city council and from the mayor concerning, uh, police reform in the city? Um, I, um, certainly disagree with defunding the police, but I think we could do some things to reform, how, how the police operate in the city. For instance, I think most residents of Champaign are, uh, are well aware that, you know, sometimes they'll see CPD officers in their rearview mirror, but it's rare to see them just kind of walking a beat and getting to know the community. And I think that would be a, a, a really important, um, step to, to help, um, revitalize the relationship between certain communities. Certainly in, in downtown Champaign, we would like to see a, a greater police presence, but, um, you know, there's always gonna be, I, I was on last week talking about the food and beverage tax, and we had met with Mayor Finan. She had mentioned that some of those funds would be going towards, um, you know, funding the police. But it would, it would certainly, um, be good to see some actual reform in the way that the police operate, both downtown and in, in the minority communities. So I'm just, you know, curious if there's any attempt to reform the way, uh, the police operate in the city. That's all. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Drake Matery or Matter at, uh, seven forty-one P M.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. So my name is Drake Matery. I'm a student at the University of Illinois, recent graduate in community health, also one of the founding members of Champaign County Anti-Racist Coalition, uh, representing Natural Path Nutrition Incorporated and Black Students for Revolution. Um, one thing about the, uh, Champaign Police Department, I would do not want the city, uh, the media to just focus on this instead of focus on actual material change and justice. This is all just a show for you all and the media to just create drama and create havoc instead of actually focusing on real change. Now, some people were speaking of police reform. Police, one thing that reformation and liberalism only does, it makes the system harder to combat to the point that you get instances where you get responses like what happened after George Floyd. You get responses of the unheard, that Dr. King said, the language of the unheard, whom you all love to bring up. So we cannot just speak of police reform. We have to actively speak of defunding the police and putting that, putting those resources into the community. Now that I have your attention, I'd like to also speak to the whole of Champaign and to the mayor, to the city council, and everybody who is listening to get involved. We, CCR, would like to have Garden Hills be a place that can be for the community, a community center, a place that will not be used, one was not used in, uh, to its full capacity in general, but during the, this pandemic, it was, I'm sure it would not be used, uh, to even that limit that it had before. We need to ensure that the people are fed. We need to ensure that the people have the proper resources to continue to go, to go on. The ten demands of CCR can be implemented in Garden Hills alone. Every community can implement the ten demands alone. Again, they can implement the demands alone. When we talk about police being involved in civic engagement, police would have to report to Garden Hills, and they would have to, and people in the community would have to know who these police officers are. Their badge numbers off junk. What do they look like? What, what is their car license plate? The people need to know the police officers. That's one way that police can get involved within the community in a different manner. And again, I, uh, would like to highlight some of the words, uh, that was said earlier. Police officers and to members of government, you all can definitely come out to these, uh, events. Again, there will not be any, uh, violence as there was with the truck running into pro, into us protesters. There will not be any violence. There will be no harm done to anybody. You can come out. It's okay. We won't, we're, stop being scared. We're not going to hurt you. We're not going to hurt you. We ask that you listen to us and that we work together or give us the work to create and change our own society, to change our own communities. We're taking the power back. But again, you all can come out. We will not hurt you. We are not scary. Trust me. That is just your white fragility and fragility of being in power if you are scared. So again, I ask that we take Garden Hills, ask that you give us Garden Hills to revitalize the community, to better the community, because you all have shown, and the police have shown, the neglect of our black community, black and brown community. So again, give us the ability to create that change ourselves. Thank you.
And that's all we have this evening, Madam Mayor.
Are there any council comments? We now have more hands that are up.
There are the snipers that wait until, like, last bidder on eBay. Yes, the hands have come up now.
I think Minnie is having trouble keeping her hand up, but her hand has been up and off a couple of times. You might want to call in on her.
I would like to talk.
Okay, Minnie, your microphone is activated. State your name and city of residence.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna get her right. Um, good evening, Mayor and city council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Minnie Pearson, President of the NAACP Champaign County Branch. One of my duties as president is to work with local police departments and police, both Champaign and Urbana, to build both work, a working relationship and trust to bring about needed change. And we know that needed change does not come overnight. Reform does not happen overnight. It takes coming to the table to work and discuss and talk. Uh, so as president and a private citizen, I've had the opportunity to work with Chief Cobb, and I have the highest level of respect for this man. And especially with the chief being a black man. Our chief and the way he leads the police off, his police officers is always well done. Uh, he's always willing to help and talk to build trust between the community and the police department. Two, uh, he is always there to answer hard questions. And sometimes we don't like what he always says, but from the beginning of his job, he inherited, uh, uh, things that he did not like. So his job has been pretty hard. And I have worked with him to come up with solutions to community problems that he, uh, he's been willing to work with me on. He cares deeply about the community and the people that he serves. And as I traveled to Springfield with him back in twenty eighteen to sign the Ten Shared Principles, which is the intent to build a relationship between the black community and the police department. He started right away talking about how we can address our, our youth. I mean, the young people in our community to build a better understanding of how to interact with the police and vice versa. I worked with him at the high school with the youth, at the middle school with the youth, and he was always willing to be there. I do not at any time agree with calling our chief, whom I am, have the highest respect for, calling him names, coon, those kinds of things. It hurt me deeply. And as the NAACP president, I am here to confront anyone who is treating anybody in an unjust way. And I, of course, you already know that, that I will do that, and I have a deep appreciation for our protesters because they are getting their voices out there to be heard. But at the same time, reform comes when we come to the table to work out our differences. Uh, so tonight, as a private citizen and the NAACP president, I support Chief Cobb in every shape, form, and fashion. He's human. And he's doing a wonderful job, and I will stand with him any day. However, I do appreciate the, the protesters, a peaceful protest. But not to degrade, call names, or put down, or deface, or any of those things. That's where I draw the line. And so with that being said, I just want you to know that reform is needed, but it comes with us coming together to talk and discuss. The name-calling and all of the other things sets us back, and it's not easy for us to get to where we need to be. Thank you, and, uh, I appreciate the time.
And the, uh, there are three callers left, and the next one is Kevin at, uh, seven fifty. Please state your name and city of residence.
Hey, my name's Kevin Cobb. City of residence is Champaign, Illinois. Uh, longtime city resident, founder of Liberty and Justice for All, and also active member of HVNT, which is, um, one of our nonprofit groups here in Champaign. So I'm just gonna make this quick. Uh, I'm, I'm always gonna be myself, and I'm gonna say this. First of all, Chief Cobb is my first cousin. My family, my blood, okay? Love to God to death. I'm gonna always support him. Uh, he's done a great job. We, we all, we all fought hard to get him in to the position that he's in. And while I don't always agree with everything he does, I'm always gonna support him. And he has supported these rallies. He's made it as, 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 as peaceful as he can to try to help out with everything. He's tried to be transparent. He's tried to be available. Um, he showed up at several things. He's milked with us, and all that was fine and dandy until, you know, until this group now wants to come out and, 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 and call people coons. That's just, that's, to me, that's just, how are you fighting racism when you're, when you're attacking someone with racial slurs? How are you having peaceful protests when you're following people from their cars and you're putting cameras in their faces and you're calling them names and you're, you're impeding them? How are you a peaceful protester when you're telling people to stand your ground? Um, how are you having peaceful protests when you're jumping in the back of people's trucks and then jumping on there and saying that they kidnap people to the mass audience on Facebook Live? So I support the chief. Um, I've been threatened, but I'm not, I don't worry about threats. So we need to get back to being peaceful, and we need to support our chief because he has the hardest job around, especially as a black man. So, long story short, I support the chief. I'm always gonna support him. I support the city council. I support these groups if they just would get out there and do the right thing. So I'm gonna get off, but I appreciate your time. I support the chief. I'm gonna be down there rooting him on one hundred percent at the end of the day. Thank you for your time.
Um, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna turn the microphone on. Um, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna turn the microphone on for Rita. State your name and your city of residence. At seven fifty two P M.
Good evening, Council. My name is Rita Connerly. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I am calling as it relates to a lot of concerns that I have regarding conversations that have been had. And I hear my name coming out a lot tonight meeting. Um, I wanna start off by saying that I did issue a public apology as it relates to the racial slur that was left for or directed to Chief Cobb. Oh, gosh, somebody's trying to call me. Sorry, guys, someone's interrupting my call. Um, I personally appreciate Chief Cobb's statement and acknowledge and him acknowledging that CCR is rather a small group. Uh, many of those right now are uncomfortable um and are calling for arrests of those who are expressing their feelings. And I have heard you state that you cannot arrest your way out of a problem. And Chief Cobb has on many occasion attested to that. And so I'm hoping that in this situation, that will also um remain. I'm disappointed, especially after seeing many of the news media outlets and I'm concerned in how the media is reflecting CCR in a negative light. As you also have heard, many of the callers earlier have stated that they have come out and they have seen how peacefully CCR has demonstrated. There was a very powerful message left um there at the police station on Thursday. However, had the police been a little more proactive, then I'm sure that what they are now trying to constitute as ca- crossing into criminal territories would not have occurred. I have been in contact with Urbana Police, so it's very disappointing as a uh uh citizen of Champaign that people are calling from the Urbana to have a relationship, to try to understand better and to make sure that we understand the parameters and that they understand our mission without trying to intervene with um the message that we are sending. I've also been in contact um with the county and they are inquiring and as well uh interested in what CCR is doing and also let us know the the limits in which we have. Uh, I did speak with Todd Myers on Thursday night. I would like to advise that CCR meeting was scheduled to begin at eight P M. He did not call me until nine fifty-two. And at nine fifty-two, Todd Myers called and in in his, the conversation between he and I went exactly like this. How's it going, Rita? It's going okay, Todd. Um, hey, I just received a call from someone on the inside who said, someone's writing on the window. Oh, Todd, I'm sitting on the south side of the building. I'm sorry, let me go around here and check. Yeah, if you could, please, and tell them to stop writing on the window. Sure, no problem. I proceeded to go and check what was going on on the east side of the building and the writing on the window, it was it was there. They had every opportunity, we were in their territory, to come out and proactively stop protesters who were attempting to attempting to to artis- artistically express what it is they have been feeling. Um, instead of warrant, I'm sorry. Oh, gosh, what we need to do and what we have to recognize is that there is a history of a broken system that many people have are realizing. And that is where the divisions is uh has started, not artistically express expressive uh chalk and water soluble paints on the space right there in front of the police station. So I'm very disappointed in how the city is choosing to respond when we have greater concerns right here in our city with having a murder just this past weekend and still having his his killer out on the street. And we're still talking about water soluble paint and chalk that has washed away over the weekend with the paint. Can you wash away racism? Can you wash away implicit bias? Can you wash away the death and the shooting and the killing of the black and brown boys that our police are doing to and continuously doing to our people? We can't wash that way as easily. But to say that you want to arrest people who are out here expressing and compare them to looters and rioters, I'm gonna need y'all to really re- really rethink some of the things that's going on. Again, I find it strange that other authorities in this county have reached out, but Champaign Police have not reached out. I've had several conversations with Anthony Cobb when I was with another organization. Unfortunately, it did not work me work me um being a part of that organization because they're not representative or and or inclusive of all people. I support LGBTQ. I support all people. Um, I'd also like to say I don't find it strange that I was harassed for the three weeks that Anthony was out of town by his first cousin.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
In addition, it has been over three weeks since a man was intentional on ramming through peaceful protesters as well as me being battered by someone, and I have not heard anything of that. When I asked the police to provide me the information, I was misled with the incorrect information so that I was not able to attend the court date of the person who battered me. I am very disappointed in how chalk is really revealing how uncomfortable a lot of the people in this city are, including not only our city officials, but our police. And now everyone else is really starting to see these systems that are broken and always been against black and brown people. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Willie Comer.
Um, I I simply, um, I just wanna make sure everyone can hear me at this point. Okay, thank you.
State your name and city of residence.
Okay, uh, Willie Comer, and I am from Champaign, Illinois. And I simply wanted to come on to say, um, as I have worked tirelessly with our young people, uh, to include the young man that was murdered even this weekend, um, he was a part of our midnight basketball program from age sixteen to um this point. Um, there's never been a time that we've had an issue that I called Chief Cobb and they have not responded. And I have always watched how they responded. And every time there was a response, um, I've actually watched some of his officers come to respond to a call that I had to make because there were kids who were out in a park late at night, um, unsupervised. And the the officers who showed up actually showed up and played basketball with kids and then told them to go home. Um, they spent time with the kids. They didn't just come and yell. So I thought that I was very, very impressed with that. Uh, there was another incident when um I was in, we were in Garden Hills and we were praying on corners and police officers pulled up. And I immediately got defensive, uh, because they were white police officers, but they did, they got out of the car and actually talked with me and had a conversation and and was thanking us for being in our community. Um, everybody and everything is not going to be perfect. There, everybody's going to make mistakes, but I don't think that we're in a position to start um attacking uh our police uh in a way uh that it becomes detrimental to our entire community. Our kids are watching how we handle this. And the way that we respond will be the way that they respond. It will become their reaction. And so we've got to be very careful when we publicly um attack those uh that we are uh that are committed to helping keep our city safe. And so I I literally just wanted to come on to say, let's be careful uh as the leaders of our city, how we present ourselves and whatever issues we have to our children, to our young people, because they're watching and they're listening. And if we are not respecting one another, if we are not um professionally presenting our issues to one another and it just becomes this bashing, battering, um, that's really not the way that we should uh be seen uh in front of our kids and our young people. And so if we wanna help them, let's help them understand how to be civil, how to um have uh real conversations as adults, um, and and how to move forward. Uh, but I I I just wanted those who are listening to know and understand that there has never been a time where I've called on our police chief and he has not shown up um for the safety of our kids. And I don't think that there is some malice or something that he has that is keeping him from being uh who God has called him to be. And so I I'm done. I I just wanted to share um and let you know um just where I was, that we need to be careful about how we present ourselves because our young people are watching.
Uh, Madam Mayor, the next person is Justin Michael Hendricks.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Justin Michael Hendricks of Champaign, Illinois. I'm a Parkland College student and state advocate, also founder of Homos, the New Homeboy. Last week, Thursday, was another day in which white flight and white fear took place again. Last week, Thursday, was another day in which city council members chose police over the people. Last week, Thursday, was another day demonstrated in ten days and ten demands in which we have presented, performed and projected to the public at large. Artistic expression is the best talent used to shed light on matters that make us bothered or unapologetic. Stop calling it graffiti as a way to stereotype black and brown bodies when the community that's in that space are majority white allies and our counterparts. You know, if you come out, Councilman Mary Shake, you'll see the difference in what you tell the people and what you write in your statements. I am grateful to the hip hop community and so should you be. Do we agree with all the actions that have taken place? No. However, we acknowledge areas of concern and plan to do better with CCR. You have to re- you have to recognize that we have been in the streets since May outside the mall. We, the people, not you, the politicians, state reps and councilmen. You have to recognize that we have been doing the civic engagement and restoring the community, even with the food pantry. And shout out to Marshall for doing that, who's who's the brainchild behind it, is what the community is needing. We, the people, not the politicians, state reps or councilmen, as I'm unsure if you're too scared or too sophisticated to come out. Let's make it clear, the school to prison pipeline is real. And last time I checked, Unit Four School District has not updated their system. The social justice seminars are supposed to be vehicles by which we can work together to systemically improve our schools districts' ability to support students in learning through the lens of social justice. But where are the updates? They're not there. So how are you improving everyone at large? Oh, let me guess, another study session. I must say, I will be remiss if I did not say as a black man and lead organizer that I have been out here, what I will not stand for is any attacks on people, especially women and children, regardless of relation or affiliation. Lastly, thank you to the Urbana Police for acting fast yesterday when another white man hiding a gun once again came in spaces unwanted to take focus from our peaks. Come out and check on us, especially Rita, a black mother who's doing civic engagement and doing it most of the time by herself or even with her children. What are you scared for? Oh, I know, because black lives matter and even our allies know it's time. If you don't want it, we will and we'll take it back. It's our streets and it's time that you recognize that. Thank you, take care and goodbye.
The uh next uh caller is Danisha Grant.
Hi, how's everyone doing? My name is Danisha. Um, I didn't even wanna get on here, but I just.
Say your name and your city of residence.
My name is Danisha Grant, um, and I reside in Champaign, Illinois. Um, I honestly just wanted to point out the inaccuracy. Um, as I watched the news, the statement, you know, was that the police called um and asked, you know, for Rita to stop. And, you know, with me being there, um, you know, whatever, hearing the conversation, because she did put it on speaker, that that was literally not the conversation at all. Um, and it it, I was so confused to hear him say it like, so, you know, what's the word? He said it as if like he was there as if he made the call, like he trusted his officer a thousand percent as if what he said was like that. And that literally wasn't the case at all. Um, and I find it hard to even concept that everyone is looking at Rita as like a bad person or a vandalist, I guess, whatever you guys are calling it. Um, and the fact that she has eight children and she works at the U of I and she has so much to lose, like, and the fact that she has almost every color that there is inside of her, you know, and her daughter, one of her, her oldest daughters, um, dad is like biracial, you know, so she has a family of of white, Hispanic, African American, whatever, you name it, that it runs, because there's so many of them, it runs in them. Um, and I just personally wanted to stick up for her and speak for her. Um, and there's just so much going on right now, like a a man was just killed, like not even a couple of days ago. And the fact that this is still like the news, this was the first thing that you guys talked about, like this was the first thing that was addressed, like vandalism, like vandalism is what you guys are calling it and it's gone. Like, okay, maybe there's a couple handprints, you know, but there's a couple handprints scarred on us, like literally, what do you mean? Like, I I I don't think that this should be a as of as of a big deal that it is. Um, and me being as young as I am and, you know, not even, I don't know, I just feel like this is ridiculous. I don't understand why this is a topic and there are so many unsolved murders right now. There's so many things that that could be going on, like we're poor, like literally the community is poor as shit. I mean, oh, excuse me, I'm so sorry, it's poor, it's it's poor as dirt, like there's so much more that we could be focusing on and spending our time talking about rather than something that's gone. And, you know, I'm sorry that Chief Chief Cobb's feelings got hurt, like I'm so sorry that, because and if you look at the interview, he just looked very upset. He looked like his feelings were hurt, like this whole interview was about his feelings getting hurt. He personally felt attacked, like, okay, I'm sorry. He as a man, and he has always felt personally attacked, he's black, so I don't know why this is bothering him so much. Um, and I and and to speak on Kevin Cobb, because he definitely addressed Rita stating that she said kidnapping or something, she called it as she see it as as a white man drives through a a a black crowd predominantly, or at least the reasoning of the crowd was about black people. And he drives through it and I don't know what happened, whether whether she jumped in there because she wanted to or she had to. She jumped in there and Rita called it what she was. If he wasn't there, what was the point of even mentioning Rita yelling kidnapped? Like, that it just shows that he has a a target on Rita's back, like i- in all the videos, like he he comes to Rita's events, whether they're Rita's events at all, anywhere that Rita is, he comes and he targets, he targets Rita. It's ridiculous. It is harassment. He's a grown man. All this is just ridiculous. I just think we need to focus on what what the community really needs. And this is a part of what the community needs. We need some readjustment. My name is Danisha and that is all. Have a good day.
And Madam Mayor, that's everybody who has had their hand up, who hasn't already spoken this evening. There's one more hand up, but he's already spoken at seven forty-one P M.
What is the council wishes as far as allowing one last speaker? Might you wanna go ahead and allow it?
He's already, okay.
Yeah, I guess my, I don't care, other than the fact that we've usually been pretty consistent that you only get to speak once, but if others are fine, that's fine.
I would need a motion. Seeing no motion, anyone who hasn't spoken yet, if you wish to speak, this is your last chance. Once we move on to council comment, we do not come back to audience participation. Councilmember Bruno, I don't see any. Do you see any additional hands?
No additional ones, Your Honor.
Okay. Council comment, any council member have any comments? Sitting up, Councilmember Stock.
I'll take a, I'll take a run. Um, I appreciate the comments tonight. I think there's been a variety of points of view, um, some of which I know we're aware of, some of which maybe perhaps we're not. Um, I do wanna sort of take a moment, though, as I was Saturday evening, as I had my, was getting phone calls and so forth, that while we are spending a lot of time dealing with graffiti and those issues, and that's certainly the top story of the week, it is worth noting that we did have another homicide on Saturday night. And I think it's also worth noting that we as a community need to, you know, while we may have differences with the with each other, with the police, with whatever, we need to work together to solve some of those types of issues. And um and that may mean working with the police, that may mean uh working with each other. Uh, Pastor Comer made a good point about uh the uh victims' involvement in midnight basketball and and, you know, positive things that we have going on in the community that we need to continue to keep up with and also not lose sight of. And I think that's something that we all need to constantly have in our mind, that there that these homicides are still taking place. Um, I don't know, and Chief Cobb, I do not wanna put you on the spot, but obviously your statement was brought up a lot tonight. I don't know if you want to, for those people who don't look at the city webpage on Facebook, if you wanna speak to that statement at all. If you don't, it's totally fine, but I know since it came up and I know there are people in the audience that watch us on Tuesday nights but may not watch us on Facebook, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all.
Councilmember Stock, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I wasn't expecting to speak this evening. Uh, my statement uh is my statement. Uh, I apologize that I got on the meeting a little bit late, so I didn't hear some comments that were made earlier. Um, but there is concern um among the employees uh about the incident that happened on Thursday. Uh, we're in a mess to try to look at uh why it occurred and why um our officers responded in the manner they did. Once we get through that, I I have a better understanding of everything that happened last week, uh, and we'll move forward from there. As in the statement, I am committed and as well as the department's committed to continue working with our uh community. Uh, we wanna be engaging, we wanna continue to collaborate and we wanna work with uh our residents to identify. We want to be engaging. We want to continue to collaborate and we want to work with our residents to identify ways in which that we can improve our relationship. That has always been a goal since I've been chief and we'll continue to work through that. I'm proud of the men and women here at the Champaign Police Department. I'm proud of the work that they're doing and the professionalism they have. There's room for improvement. We are not perfect. But they're making adjustments and they're moving forward. So thank you for the opportunity to share my comments.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kyles.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as we, we talk about these issues, I think that, you know, as Councilmember Stock said, we all have a, some of us have a difference of opinion. And some of us go about ways differently in ways that we agree with and some ways we don't agree with. I believe that we've got a lot of issues ahead of us before. It's things that we probably should, that, that should have been addressed way before this council, to be quite frank with you. But we need to move forward and we do need to move forward together. You know, I was thinking about this the, the other day, that when you live and, you know, walking through Gramercy Apartments, walking through Garden Hills, I'm a member of the City of Champaign, but I reside in the Douglas community. Change can't happen fast enough. And sometimes when change can't happen fast enough, people do things that other people would disagree with. And that's just a, a reality and that's a fact. I remember years ago, and Mayor, you, you, you definitely remember with me because we had a lot of tough issues to, 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 to work with as well as you, Councilmember Bruno, but with the death of Kiwan Carrington, and we had to deal with that. There are a lot of angry and upset people. But out of, out of that came C cap, as one of the speakers talked about. Out of that came the Community Coalition, the Small Business Incentive Program. Garden Hills, which was not even, not on the map for, for drainage considerations. Now is in the, the drainage program. And so these protests and these, 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 this, the opposition does cause us to think. Now, I'm not going to say that I would support defacing the, the, the police building. That, that would definitely not be my style or what I would do personally. And wouldn't I suggest anybody else to do that? What I would continue to do is work with individuals that I agree with, to be quite honest with you. And to be honest with you, individuals that I don't, that I don't agree with. I think that we've gotten to a point, we, we, I mean, we live in some, some strange times with the coronavirus. You know, we live in some strange times with the, I wouldn't even say the death, but the killing of George Floyd. We live in some strange times and we're, we're trying to work those through, work through those as the best as we can. But we do need to have a level, I do agree with the level of sensitivity and urgency that we have to these issues. Because like I said, when you come from a place like Gramercy Apartments, Garden Hills and Douglas community, change can't happen fast enough. I think it's important as we talk about, you know, pre pandemic, the things that we were working on and that we had in place that would have, that have kind of been on hawks, number one, that have helped people. Such as programs like midnight basketball. We obviously understand that we need to keep kids safe. And so we're not, we're not out here trying to play basketball. Motivating more males. Or M M M, I don't want to mess that name up because I always mess it up to from a certain extent, but I'm, the reality is we have programs that kids have personal contact. And I think that's what we're missing right now. The programs that, that work for people and where kids had an opportunity to express themselves, not just from an athletic standpoint, but from a professional critical thinking standpoint, those programs and dare I even say churches, you know, people went to church. And now, you know, those places where people went to, to get help, to, to pray, to, to find, to find something, to find, to find hope. There's, it's not there right now. And so whether you are a protester, and I think that sometimes protesters get a bad rep because of whatever actions, but whether you agree or disagree, I think we all agree that during this time, we have to work together. We do have to work together on the census. We've talked about that. The census is a big deal. And when communities are particularly black and brown communities are underrepresented, those dollars that would, that we desperately need to improve our communities are not allocated to us. I definitely wish that we had more time. If it were me, I would wish that we could just push it off to two, twenty twenty-one if you asked, if you asked me. The youth violence with just the death that we had a couple of days ago, I mean, that's a big deal. So programs that we were working on such as a lift program, which was an aggressive approach, we've got a, and from my standpoint, from my vote, I would vote that we would find money. And I understand that in order to find money, that means that we have to sacrifice in other areas. And so to deal with youth violence, we have to, to, it, we've started to do that. And we're going to have to continue to do that. We're going to have to find that in COVID. We're going to have to find those resources. Like I, I keep on saying, when you live in Gramercy Apartments, Garden Hills, Douglas Square, change can't happen, Douglas community, the North End, change can't happen enough. It can't happen fast enough. But I do realize that we have to remain respectful towards each other and love each other. And I think Bishop Gwynne said something. Yeah. And I, and I don't know how I repeated, but he said, is it nice? Is it kind? Is it necessary? And I understand that change doesn't always come out in this pretty picture that we would like it. But it definitely helps us move the ball forward. It, for every conversation, one of the things that I've always, you know, we talk a lot about Chief Cobb. The reality is there's always two sides of the, of the conversation. And as an African American chief, you're always walking, if you, if you support, if you support African American initiatives, are you supporting enough? And if you don't support this, are you not supporting it? I mean, your level of support is always questioned. And I think that's what the speakers were saying, hey, this, this chief is, is doing the best that he can. I know that when I heard gunshots at outside of my house at one o'clock in the morning, you know what I went to? I looked for a police officer. And so we do recognize that we need police officers and we do recognize that we need to build positive relationships. And we know that, we understand and recognize that those conversations go two ways and extend two ways. The city council, I know that for every phone call that we get and saying, hey, we need to continue to work to, to build the black community, to build our community, to build my community. There's also phone conversations and questioning, are we allowing things to go too far? And the reality is we, to be quite honest with you, I don't really think that anybody would say that. It's not like we call anybody and say, hey, do this, do that and do this. From an advocacy standpoint, you know, I've always appreciated, like I said, in, in most cases, I think we agree with the majority of what's going on as far as people marching and the message behind the marching. Where we, you know, disagree would, would be more so along the lines of when we get into the name calling. And, and that's, that's something that's going to, that's not going to, it's not going to bring us together. There's no politically correct way to say that. It won't bring us together. But I do, do believe that we do need to focus, focus on that funding that we talked about, that we worked diligently. And we know that COVID nineteen, our budget is taking a huge hit. We do need to fu- focus on funding to make sure that we're fighting actively youth violence with youth programs. There is no, you know, to be honest with you, Zoom is not an effective way to reach kids. And we know, and it's not effective way to reach kids who don't have that, that guidance and support, you know? And so we are going to have to put our brains together to figure out how we safely reach those children. Because, and how will we, we reach adults? A lot of times we talk about the kids, but we don't talk about the adults who are going through just as much as the kids are going through. So I'll take the time to, to thank everyone who's engaged in the, in the conversation. Maybe we don't all agree on everything, but the reality is we agree on the one thing is that we need to continue to work together to build our community. And that may take us to have some time where we have to take a pause back and say, hey, was that really what we really wanted to do? Was that really the message that we wanted to send out? And maybe it may take us a time to says, hey, we need to move faster because these issues aren't going away. So I appreciate, I appreciate everyone in the conversation and everyone putting in work and look forward to continuing to do that work with you all.
Councilmember Beck.
I just have a couple of things to say and I'll be brief. I think that I have made it pretty clear from the very beginning of these discussions, my commitment to creating change and making significant changes to how we address policing in our community. And tonight, all I want to do is just reaffirm that commitment to the community. I think that we get lost in the weeds sometimes about conflicts that steer us off of what our commitment is. And for me, I've been pretty laser focused on what that commitment is. I don't make a lot of statements about the things that are happening that surround it. Not that these aren't important conversations, but right now, my energy and my focus is on how do we move forward to create the changes that we all want and desire in our community? And to that end, what I'd like to do is to continue to invite people to contact me actively. If you are interested in telling me what you're looking to change, if you're interested in talking about what kinds of programs or what kind of changes you're looking for in our policing in the community, I, I want to hear from you. I want to have those conversations. I need for you to contact me. That's a pretty easy thing to do. If you go to our website on the, on the city's webpage, you can find my contact information, actually along with all of our contact information. And, and I promise you that I will respond. If you call me, I will answer. If you email me, I will respond. I hear many voices tonight talking and those voices, I'd like to meet you and find out who you are and find out more about what you want. I have been at many of the different events that have occurred throughout the community over the last months. Unfortunately, I can't make them all. There are lots of community groups that are working on lots of things and I try to make the ones that I can. But as you know, every council member also has a job that they're doing and, and, and so we, we, we wait, we make what we can. We do what we can. So I hope to be able to attend more things going forward. And if you would like to let us know about what's happening, then I can also, you know, make an effort to be at places. I don't always know when something is actually happening in the community because I'm not maybe on the Facebook page that it's being advertised on, or I might not know how to, what, what the details are of an event. But that doesn't mean that I'm not interested in it. So I'm hoping that we can continue to be in good conversation with one another. And that's what my goal always is. So I look forward to that and I hope that I hear from more of you.
Councilmember Bruno.
I would follow up on the remarks made by Councilmembers Stock, Kyles and Beck and just say, we as a community are in a very difficult time. And we have challenging times that lie ahead of us. And to the extent that we as a community can work together to solve our problems, we will all be better off. And solving our problems isn't a zero sum game. If we, the issues surrounding race in America are critically important. We also have other issues and we have to be able to multitask. While we examine and look at our community and say, what can we do differently about race in Champaign County? We also, the nine of us must lead the community in terms of the generation of municipal revenue to provide the services that people expect, storm water management. It won't be too long before we'll be dealing with snow removal. Those are very real issues that impact people's daily's life, daily lives as well. And the fact that I bring up snow removal and storm water management isn't to somehow equate that and say that's just as important as dealing with issues of race. It's to say we have to be able to do all of them all at the same time because, because if, if they're ignored, we will have other problems. We have to continue to have our fire department adequately staffed and robust to response to, respond to the issues that they deal with, medical emergencies in our community. We need to keep our community economically healthy. We're going to lose the University of Illinois support that we have counted on for a hundred years as the economic engine that props up our community. I'm not very optimistic that we're going to have an in-person semester this fall. It's wishful thinking, I'm afraid. I, I'm afraid we're going to go the way in Notre Dame and the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Maybe I'll be wrong. We already know we're not going to have the revenue that comes with the way things used to be. Maybe we'll have a lot less revenue all across. And with that lack of revenue, people are still going to want the storm water to be dealt with, the snow to be removed, the police department to be adequately staffed, the fire department to be adequately staffed. So while we listen to the voices that come out every Tuesday night from the community and talk to us about problems we, we are having and we have had in our community, we also must give a fair amount of attention to the other issues, the planning and developing issues, the arterial streets, fixing the potholes, because it falls upon us to still do that work even while we deal with grander issues of racism in America and the like. I would say about the census, we are in a particularly unlucky time to have a census that depends upon counting a community and to have it occur during the coronavirus pandemic is going to cost our community greatly. We may want to examine spending the money on a special census in 12 months or 18 months to honestly and accurately reflect their numbers in our community. When and if life gets back to normal as we've known it in our community. We lose a lot of federal funding for 10 years if the snapshot in time occurs when the university students are not present. The, it doesn't surprise me that the campus area has low response rate on the census. There's probably a little curled up piece of paper jammed in the doorknob of a lot of vacant apartments on campus. And you know, if the person was home and answered it, they'd probably say, I already responded back in Homewood Flossmore or whatever. So it's not necessarily inaccurate, but it's going to cost our community. Those are the issues we'll have to take up again in the future. I would ask everybody who takes the time to call us on Tuesday nights to work together to try to make our community better, a nicer place to live. Try to solve these problems in a civil way that's respectful to each other. Listen to everybody else's points of view so that we can try to make the most of this very, very difficult time for our community. Thanks.
Councilmember Pam Fatty.
Councilmember Pam Fettie.
I wanted uh to take a minute and just um thank everybody who spoke this evening. It's always helpful to get the varying uh voices and perspectives. Um, as has been um said by my fellow council members, this is a complex and complicated issue, but um, it will mean that we have to come together as a community to be able to solve these issues and to be able to um foster the change that um councilmember Kyle spoke about. Uh, and I wanted to take a minute to be able to say that I do support our uh chief of police and have always had faith in our leadership here. Um, it is sometimes hard to understand these uh complicated issues because sometimes it takes sympathy, sometimes it takes empathy and we all don't um, sometimes fit in those categories for some of the situations that are um coming up. Um, so it takes understanding, it takes patience and it takes the ability to listen. Um, so um, that comes also with knowing uh what the people of this community, as councilmember Beck stated, what they are interested in, what changes that they would like to see. Um, it takes a lot of phone calls, it takes a lot of conversations, um, and those conversations sometimes are hard. They're hard to um have because sometimes they are um making us all face some difficult um things about ourselves, about this community. But at the end, it helps us come to some ideas and some perspectives that will make us stronger and will make us better. It also means that we may not always have the same perspectives, but if we move forward um respectfully, if we move forward um i- in, in ways that show that we should have faith in each other. And then sometimes the actions that we have, which we want to uh, show in strength and when, that we want to show um will come um to evoke change. Um, won't be so divisive, but maybe will help to have the change that we want. And so I look forward to um continuing the conversations. I know um, that there are um many people that I would, will be reaching out to after this evening because I do want to learn more. Um, and it's, it's sometimes hard to know where all the pieces of all this fit in. But it's very helpful and I um am appreciative. Um, but I also believe that we have to um be supportive of the leadership. Um, because as councilmember Bruno said, there are a lot of things that we are relying on um, each other as a city, as a council, as a community that is not only um, to make these changes, but also to have operations um of infrastructure of um general daily practices that we need to move forward with. So I'm encouraged, um, though I was a little um saddened by the events, but I, I believe that we can move forward and I will always um be in support of um our leadership.
Any others? Councilmember Bricks.
I don't think there's too much more to add. Um, I think the common theme is that we've all got to work together to come up with good solutions. And um, I know that we're getting ready to start these conversations and I hope that maybe Dorothy can give a little bit of an update as to when that's going to happen. And I hope that people that were on this call tonight, and I know there's been a lot of back and forth on lots of different threads on social media. And so I hope that people will come out to these and share their ideas and hear each other out and be respectful in that process. And it's hearing ideas not only from the community, but from our police officers. Um, and from um the activists and people who have been engaged within the different neighborhoods and things. And so I hope you come out and share your opinions and really help us um, to, to work through these issues and to come up with the best ideas um, to make Champaign a great place. Thanks.
Councilmember McGladney.
Yeah, I, I would just echo the comments made already. Um, I do think we all need to work together. Um, something that I have to kind of keep in mind too, um, i- i- even in my current position particularly, is that not everybody speaks the same way and uses the same language in which to express um, their concerns. Uh, I kind of, and it's kind of ma- it may be echoing councilmember Kyle's remarks where, you know, I wouldn't particularly choose to um express my frustrations or anger in the same way that others might. Um, that doesn't mean that I don't understand it. And it also doesn't mean, uh, particularly as someone who is a biracial gay man, uh, that I don't owe um my freedoms to people who, who did riot and who did protest. Um, you know, every year we have like Martin Luther King holiday and uh, a lot of peaceful quotes are cherry picked uh from him. Uh, and those are great quotes. He also has some not so peaceful quotes uh and speeches and um, those don't often get brought up as much these days, uh, but he wasn't wrong. Uh, he was just expressing, you know, he was a human being, so he had multiple points of view and um different ways of expressing uh his, his point. Uh, and you know, the Stonewall, uh, the modern day gay rights movement was uh um kicked off, you know, by the Stonewall riots. Um, so all that is to say, you know, uh, yeah, me personally, I'm, I'm not uh, a person who necessarily condones, you know, um, rioting or uh all those other, and vandalism and all those other kind of things. But the irony of it is, I also understand that um it has been part of the process of furthering civil rights um for quite a long time. Uh, so uh, I actually kind of like what we heard in the comments tonight in that we heard from a lot of different perspectives. And you know, not everybody has to agree with all those perspectives, and I think that's okay. Uh, but we all should be listening to those perspectives and not immediately um, shut off uh the point of view because we not necessarily agree with it. You may not necessarily agree with the means that people are going uh with toward an end, but that doesn't mean that we can't agree with what the end should be. Uh, so in that regard, I do hope, again, to echo everybody's comments, I hope we're able to come together and work together.
Anybody else?
I want to go in a completely different direction, and that's not to say the conversations we've been having aren't important. But we are still in the middle of a pandemic. And I just want to take a moment to talk briefly about the orders that were issued today relating to um campus town bars and restaurants. Um, and also for our bars and restaurants in the rest of the city. Um, citywide, we are um ordering that there has to be seated service um, in an attempt to try to cut the spread of the COVID virus. Additionally, on campus, we are going to have outdoor um service only really beginning this weekend. Um, bars will start earlier, um, but the restaurants will start this weekend. City staff is available. They've been working with restaurants to find outdoor space within um city right of way like we did downtown um for the campus town in order to allow for expanded areas for service. Um, it is going to be a challenge for these business owners. There is absolutely no doubt about it. I want to encourage our community to patronize them, whether that's in person, outside, or through Grubhub. But try to help them through, this is a three-week um timeframe. And that is really in partnership with the University of Illinois and the city of Urbana. This has been identified as a crucial timeframe um for us as a community. Um, we all know that keeping the students um healthy on campus also is integral to um not only the health of our community, but also the economic health of our community. And if we can all pitch in together for the next three weeks, um, wear our masks and wash our hands and social distance. Um, and, and really take seriously the potential impact of the virus. We may be, because of the science available here at the University of Illinois, able to really keep our students here for the entire semester. And, and what a benefit that would be, not only for the students and the university, but for our economy and all of the businesses that rely on the University of Illinois students to be here. It's a huge ask, it's a huge sacrifice, but what we have to gain um, is the potential for um an entire semester. And you know, if our, if, if the science from the University of Illinois um, is true, um, then as a community, if our viral load goes down and there are fewer cases, it becomes much safer to be indoors at a time when the weather is turning and we all want to be indoors. And so I am asking everyone to join with me as we, you know, celebrate the amazing work that the University of Illinois has done um because of their testing protocols, developing the test, developing the app. We are in a position here to, to really um, to do well and uh to be able to keep our students on campus and our community healthy. And so I, I think that we're really lucky to be um the home of the University of Illinois. And I want to thank my partners um with the chancellor's office and with Mayor Marlin, who have all been working together and all of the staff who um, for several weeks has been reaching out to businesses and um, really doing the heavy lifting required. Um, COVID hasn't gone away. And so, you know, we have lots of issues as um Deputy Mayor Bruno said, we have to multitask. Um, and so um for me, this one has been my primary issue this week. Um, we will turn to other issues as well. Thank you. Um, and with that, vouchers.
Um, bear with me, Madam Mayor. Where are they? Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the vendor payments in the amount of $2,679,734.8 cents.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Stock?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Bricks?
Yes.
Bruno?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Mckyles?
Yes.
Ian Fettie?
Yes.
Mayor Finan?
Yes. Vouchers are approved.
Madam Mayor, I move that, oh, go on, I interrupted you, sorry.
No, you're good.
The vouchers are approved. Don't you, okay. Uh, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the payroll of August 7th, 2020 in the amount of
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Stock?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Bricks?
Yes.
Bruno?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
Kyle's?
Yes.
Ian Fettie?
Yes.
Mayor Finan?
Yes, payroll is approved, eight to zero. And we are now, oh, I guess city manager, I did not give you an opportunity if there's anything that you wish, if you had any comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just briefly, before we start the study session, I'd like to quickly address councilmember Bricks. Um, she had asked a question about the timeline for our listening sessions on police reform. Um, as you know, that today is only the police chief's second day back from vacation and it's extremely important that he be part of the dialogue. Um, so he and I need to sit down and kind of finalize the plan, but we anticipate that those will begin in early September. Um, and then I do also want to mention that next week, the August 25th study session evening, we do not have any agenda items for next week's study session, and so the administration will be canceling the city council meeting for August 25th.
All right, so um we have a study session items. City manager, are you introducing that or am I throwing that over to planning?
Um, you can, you can throw it directly to planning as soon as they turn on their cameras and they are ready to go.
All right. Well, I'm glad that we're talking about um the census tonight because we are going to present a treasure trove of census information to you. Um, I wanted to also take the time to, well, first I shouldn't choose myself. I'm uh Lacey Rainslow. I'm a senior planner with the City of Champaign Planning and Development Department. Um, and I also have our graduate intern Caitlin Kelly um with me tonight. Caitlin has been a wonderful resource um in helping put this information together. Um, she um has been with us for about a year and um she's actively entertaining job offers, so we may not get to keep Caitlin for very much longer. Um, but we absolutely appreciate her help with all of, um, all of this information. So thank you, Caitlin. I'm going to share my screen now, um, so you can see the presentation. Um, okay, and we will get right into it. Um, all right, can everybody see that? Okay, perfect. Um, so this is our update. Uh, we're presenting the update to the comprehensive plan. Um, are reviewing our existing conditions analysis. Um, so what is the comprehensive plan? Let's begin with a refresher of what that is. The comprehensive plan is the policy document that guides the physical growth and development of the City of Champaign over the next 20 years. Um, it's also the tool that ensures that council goals regarding economic opportunity, infrastructure investment, incremental development, neighborhood planning are memorialized and translated into actions. Um, the plan has three key parts, uh, the vision and guiding principles uh chapter, the future land use categories and future land use maps. So there are six vision statements, um, each with individual guiding principles. I won't read every single one of them to you. They are available um on the comprehensive plan um website of uh the city's website. These are statements that describe what Champaign would be like if the vision was realized. So the plan sets forth a 20-year vision, but it's important to recognize the concept of eras of development. So this plan was adopted in 2011 and the vision really reflects, well, at least it reflected until maybe March of this year, um, the reality of life after the 2008 national recession. Um, and so you'll see a lot of references in that document to finishing what was started, growing in a compact contiguous way, utilizing um resources sustainably and efficiently, and things like that. Again, you know, we're sort of in the midst of perhaps the beginning of the next era. Um, we still think that this vision is relevant. It works within our existing council goals. Um, and so we feel like it's appropriate to approach this as a minor update to the plan, particularly because we are in the midst of um the COVID-19 pandemic and a number of things that we don't necessarily have data uh, to understand what the full impacts will be until um we're sort of beyond the phase that we're in now. Um, so this is a view of our future land use maps. Um, this is, this is an area that's probably the most referenced of any part of the document. Um, these maps provide clear guidelines for where growth should occur and when that growth is develop, is, is, excuse me, appropriate. Um, as far as timing and what conditions um should be uh met. So certainly we've had quite a lot of development since 2011. We know that this map needs some updating. Um, and that's one of the things we want to accomplish. Um, when we began the update process, we reviewed the current document. We looked at those council goals. We looked at the plans and things that have been updated and, and adopted since 2011. The purpose is not, the purpose of updating comprehensive plan is not to make work, right? It's not to just create a pretty new document because planning and development needs something to do. We have a lot to do. Um, the purpose is to make sure that the vision and guiding principles and the future land use chapter are still relevant. They're still useful for people like yourselves, for residents, for property development. for property developers and others when they're making decisions related to land planning. So while we know that we, you know, a, a minor update um, is the approach that we're taking. We know we do need to reflect, um, you know, things that have changed since 2011. And the best way to test, you know, if we're on the right track and to identify those emerging trends is to go to the data and to conduct an existing conditions analysis. Caitlin and I really encourage you um, to review the full existing conditions analysis reports. They're a wealth of information. Um, they are posted on the project website, which we will share at the end of the presentation. Tonight, we're just going to highlight sort of those key points that start to point us towards, you know, what are those emerging uh, trends that we should, should begin to address in this update. So we completed uh, the analysis in three parts. The first being um, the center land use analysis and the second being the growth area analysis. We presented both of those in detail at a previous study session. But the, the findings or the takeaway of those two analyses are that the majority of our commercial employment centers are functioning very well with the recommended land use uh, pattern in our uh, adopted future land use maps. There are some areas that need some, some changes or modifications, particularly the clear view area where um, council directed us to look at reducing the amount of um, office land uses and adding some commercial and residential land uses that could perhaps catalyze some of that office development to take place. And also in the southwest Champaign area, particularly around the Carl at the Fields um, area. We also learned through the growth area analysis that we have plenty of residential growth capacity within our existing service area. So we're not in a position where we need to be, you know, pushing out to the next frontier of, you know, sewer ability or something to accommodate greenfield residential development. We have plenty of service um, capacity to do that. So the current or the final piece of our existing conditions analysis is our demographic and community indicator analysis. That's really where we get to shine a light on our census data um, and see how we can learn a lot of lessons from that information. And so we'll get into that now, um, looking at um, some really fantastic infographics that Caitlin put together for us. So the first takeaway with our population figures, if you look at this um, this chart, is that Champaign has always been a growing community. We have never experienced a period um, as uh, as a community where we didn't have sustained population growth. And that is certainly true um, since 2010. We believe from our census data, um, so the census is conducted, uh, decennial census is conducted every 10 years and that's a house-to-house uh, count. But they also conduct something called the American Community Survey, which is an ongoing survey. That's the longer form, has many more questions. Um, and it's sort of, it's intended to be funded so that every eight households are being surveyed at any given time um, to provide information and estimates on population growth between that decennial census. Um, so that's where we're able to get 2018 um, estimates. And so we um, we believe that we've had about 7,000 new residents uh, moved to Champaign since 2010. And that is on top of um, the 20% growth rate that we experienced from 2010 to 2018, so 13,000 people in um, in that span of time. Or excuse me, 2000 to 2010, looking at 20,000 people basically, since 2000. That's, that's a lot of people that we've accommodated in our community. Um, and so Caitlin is going to tell you a little bit about um, the specifics of that population.
Sure. So one thing to note is that the proportion of residents age 65 and over has um, increased to 9% and the median age likewise is up to 27, where it was 25 in 2010. The data also shows that 14.5% of senior citizens live with relatives, which is a trend that we can expect to continue and increase into the future.
Looking at um, places that we live, places that our residents live, we can see this locally but also nationally, that family and household composition is changing. In Champaign, as a college community, we've always had a, a fairly sizable number of what we call non, or what the census calls, non-family households. So what is a household versus a family? The census defines a household essentially as people who share a, a dwelling unit or um, perhaps a single person dwelling unit. Think of a roommate situation, people who are not romantically involved or um, are not a parent-child kind of a situation. A family um, household is a dwelling unit that is shared by people who are in familial or romantic relationships, effectively partner relationships. Um, so about 50% of our um, housing units are renter occupied, 40% are owner occupied, and about 10% are vacant. This was really interesting. We dug into that number a little bit and found that quite a number of our units are rented or owned, but not occupied. So we're not really sure um, if that's, you know, something that is taking place with sampling error and might be cleaned up a bit with the decennial census, but it was something we wanted to keep our eye on because that vacancy number was a little higher than we expected it to be. And we also learned that our average household size is 2.3 people. That's fairly consistent with what it has been and our, our average family size is approximately three people. So certainly um, on, what's a point three person, you know, but closer to two people for households and three people for families. You'll see that um, again, looking at the living arrangements, we likely because of our student population, have a greater share of non-family households than family households.
We also looked at um, changes in median income and in the cost of living over time. Nationally, there's been an increase in the cost of housing that's outpacing increases in wages. Locally, we can see that as well. Um, median household income and family incomes are actually declining or have declined since 1989, um, whereas rent and median home values have increased. Uh, this contributes to a growing proportion of households that are housing cost burdened. That's something that HUD defines as spending more than 30% of your household income, not just on rent or mortgage, but also on utilities. And locally, nearly half of renters and one-fifth of homeowners are housing cost burdened.
So who needs workforce housing or housing that um, you know, the working, working people and working families of Champaign um, can afford? Again, a lot of this information is coming from um, housing and urban development definitions for what is the um, area median income. And I'll let Caitlin explain what that is in just a minute. But the real point of this is that um, who needs this housing? Well, we all need this housing because we all have teeth that need to be cleaned. We all have children who need to, maybe not all of us have children, we all know children at least, who need to attend school. We all buy groceries, you know, so this is not, just because you may not fall into one of these categories personally, it doesn't mean that we don't need housing that is attainable and um, suitable for the needs of people at um, every income level um, in our community. So go ahead Caitlin.
Area median income is another way of uh, looking at housing attainability. Um, it's also a HUD's created metric. Basically HUD calculates AMI for each metropolitan and non-metropolitan area in the country in order to determine eligibility for subsidized housing programs. It's dependent on the size of one's household, so it offers sort of a more nuanced way to look at median income as a per, as compared to fair market rents um, in a given area in the country. So for instance, in 2017, the median family income in Champaign was $73,688. Uh, you can see in the chart that according to HUD's calculation, that median is lower for a two-person family at 62,000. Whereas it's slightly higher for a four-person family. The logic there being that the larger your family, the more money you have to earn to maintain the same standard of living. It's also worth noting that to qualify for subsidized housing in the Champaign-Urbana metropolitan area, you have to earn less than 50 to 60% of the AMI um, for your family size. So if that said, this chart matches each AMI brackets to common professions within our metropolitan area and their median earnings.
So we uh, decided that it would be really helpful to look at the Bureau of Labor Statistics data, to sort of pair data from different sources to try to bring that data to life. You know, it's one thing to say, well, here is your AMI. But we looked to the BLS or Bureau of Labor Statistics to find those very common professions in our area and um, the wages that they um, were reported to earn on average and try to match those to sort of see, okay, well, what does that mean for what you can afford from a housing standpoint? The American Planning Association Housing Policy Guide is really fantastic and I encourage you to, to take a look at it. We'll be posting it on our project website. But they really talk about how, you know, with wages nationally, and this certainly holds true locally, being stagnant with housing costs essentially rising by 30% over the last 30 years. You know, and then, and then thinking about the policies and who is eligible for housing subsidies, then matching that with budgetary concerns of, you know, increasing higher education costs in there for student loans, increasing costs of healthcare, increasing costs of childcare. I mean, locally childcare is about $250 a week or $13,000 a year per child. You know, so really thinking about how do we accommodate housing for families that are at the 90 to 120% AMI, who will not qualify for subsidies, who may actually really be struggling as well to find attainable housing as their wages are stagnant and uh, housing costs are increasing. So thinking about housing needs for a changing population, as I mentioned, you know, the APA Housing Policy Guide, we are not the only people thinking about these issues. These are um, national level issues and there are a lot of really great resources to look at. But the top issues um, that are kind of facing Champaign, of course, are housing costs versus wage stagnation, aging population and a growth in intergenerational households, changing household composition. While housing stock is pretty stagnant, you know, house will last a very long time. So how do we make sure that we're dealing with um, some of those changes through the built environment? Obviously, our comprehensive plan is not going to um, address healthcare costs or higher education costs or childcare costs, but it can certainly address the built environment um, at the local level. So where do our residents live? We took a, a look at the housing stock in Champaign and about half is single-family detached homes. Um, about 30% of, of housing units fall into the category of multifamily buildings with 10 or more units. And there's about 20% that is everything else. So what is everything else? Everything else is, uh, has been defined uh, by a group called Opticos Design um, as missing middle housing. So they, they call that the range of house-scale buildings with multiple units that are compatible in scale and form with detached single-family homes. So something in between sort of those two extremes. Now admittedly, single-family homes have many variations and variations in size and things like that. But what are the other options? When we're looking at the, the portion of our housing stock, um, that we could perhaps um, increase the, the share of housing that is considered missing middle housing, that could perhaps start to address some of those um, changing population needs, changing population preferences, affordability, attainability, things like that. So these are some examples along the bottom of the screen like duplexes, cottage ports, townhomes, um, and even co-ops that we have locally um, in Champaign, just um, just for an example. The other thing that I, that we've noticed um, with our growth area analysis um, as well, is that we have quite a lot of um, capacity for new greenfield residential development um, on the edge of our community. So on this map, the yellow line with the triangles represents our um, sanitary sewer service area. So everything sort of inside that line, um, it has sewer, sanitary sewer um, access. We have um, been very successful, you could say, um, since uh, our 2011 plan recommended finishing what we have started. You know, completing subdivisions that were under construction. But we also have a number of developments that have been approved since before 2008 that just really haven't had any development interest, any, any movement on construction of those approved, uh, but not yet built residential subdivisions. Um, this is just, you know, one portion of the city, but in this area we have three parcels that have, um, you know, they look like farmland from, you know, the average viewer, um, but they actually have approvals with streets and lots laid out and detention basins and all of those things. That there just hasn't been any movement on. And that's about 400 acres of residential development potential. So that's something to keep in mind. Um, in the last decade, about 80% of new housing units in Champaign um, have been multifamily um, developments overwhelmingly in apartment buildings over 10 units. Um, and the remainder, about 16% has been uh, single-family detached and then, you know, 4% everything else. So um, certainly just something to keep in mind uh, as we think about updating the plan.
We also looked at um, where Champaign residents work and how many uh, employees we gain from adjacent counties and uh, counties outside of Champaign County more generally. This ties back into our local and regional population growth. It's not necessarily the case with other regions in downstate Illinois. So it speaks to the strong position of our regional economy that it's supporting population and job growth as well as continuing to be a destination both for employment and uh, entertainment, retail goods and services. So Champaign County gains almost 7,500 employees commuting from neighboring counties on a daily basis. 40% of residents work in education, healthcare and social assistance, where 22% are employed in retail, food service and hospitality. Uh, the comprehensive plan identifies the need to keep our existing commercial and employment centers strong and these figures help reinforce that point. This is important from a community development, employment opportunity standpoint, but it also directly impacts the city's bottom line. Considering that over half of the city's budget comes from sales, food and beverage and hospitality taxes. And then finally, we, we also looked at um, you know, the outcome of these numbers at a more granular, granular level. So what are the outcomes of our local economy and how are different groups experiencing it? Generally, median household and family income is reported at the citywide level. And Lacey and I noticed that it wasn't widely reported by race or ethnicity. Median household income generally uh, skews lower in our community, given the large amount of college student households. They often have, you know, little to no income, but have fairly high spending power. So, family income may be a better metric by which to look at the, the differences in this regard. So the data reveals that the median family income for Asian or white householders exceeds the citywide median, where the median uh, for black and Latino householders is substantially lower. Unfortunately, this is a pattern that holds true for every state in the nation. It's, Champaign is not an outlier in this regard.
So thinking about the impacts of Covid-19, um, and, and you know, we're doing a data analysis with the data we have available. Most of that data um, does not take into account what has happened since March of this year. That really the only data that we have available to us at this time is data from the Illinois Department of Employment Security. Um, and they may have jinxed themselves, I don't know, when they submitted um, their news release on March 12th, touting that our unemployment levels had fallen to new historical lows in, in January of 2020. The first time in a decade that Illinois fell below the national rate. And then um, because of the impacts of Covid-19, as of July 23rd of this year, the release for um, June 2019, or excuse me, June 2019 to June 2020 comparisons of unemployment rates was really dramatic. You know, Champaign went from having a 4% unemployment rate um, in June of 2019 to having over 10% in um, June of 2020. The statewide total um, is at 14.6, which is actually a record high dating back to 1976. The national rate is at 11.2, a record high dating back to 1948. So I know it's been many So I know it's been mentioned already, but certainly these are uncertain times. And we recognize that we're sort of on the cusp of the next era as we complete this document. We know that we will need to revisit it in a shorter turnaround time than our normal turnaround time for comprehensive plan updates. We anticipate that, you know, hopefully we will be in the post COVID nineteen era soon. And we will be able to look at some some additional data to see how we can quantify those impacts. And hopefully twenty-four to thirty-six months and then be able to really make plans around, you know, what are our community needs at that point? At the same time, we think it's important to complete the work that we have started. We know that there are needed updates to our future land use maps and to other pieces of the document. And we don't think it would be serving everyone best to just say, well, we're in a pandemic, let's set it aside, you know, we'll circle back. We think we should just go ahead and complete this update, recognizing that we'll likely need to do another update soon. So just to recap, looking at population and housing from our existing conditions analysis. These emerging trends and issues to consider, we know that our family household composition is changing. Does our local housing stock suit the needs of a changing population? Will it suit those needs in the future? And is suitable housing attainable to all residents? In the area of economy and employment, what steps can be taken to ensure that all Champaign residents can achieve prosperity in our community? And how can the city's key employment sectors be supported to remain resilient and to expand opportunity in the future? In the area of growth and development, what might the future of development, residential development in particular, look like? If demand for new fringe, single family development does not recover, you know, we've had a number of developments that are approved. And have been, but they're not, we're not seeing development interest in those. How can increasing the choice of housing typology? And to make that more balanced between detached, single family homes and large apartment buildings increase, you know, choices for our community? So looking at next steps, our next steps, at any good comprehensive planning process. The next step is to gather input. Obviously, with COVID nineteen, we're not holding in-person events. We're focusing on the project website. We have a survey that's posted on the project website currently that's really fantastic. It has all, maybe not all, most of the data that we've covered built right into the survey as well as those additional reports. We also have questions about transportation choices, recreation choices and other things that we're not going to cover in this presentation. But I strongly encourage you to take the survey, tell your friends. The information will be used as we update those recommended actions in this plan. We also will be conducting virtual stakeholder input meetings and and holding some online presentations or webinars. So please check out the website, it's champaignil.gov slash comp plan, so two Ps, comp plan. Once we gather that information, we will be revising the recommended actions, the future land use chapter and creating a draft document. We will utilize the the feedback from that public input. We will also then share that virtually and receive additional feedback on the draft document. You know, realistically, when we completed the update in two thousand eleven. Champaign residents seem to really prefer the online input opportunities for this kind of a plan. We didn't have a lot of interest in our in-person events for this sort of high level vision type of planning. Also, right now, as we we talked about earlier tonight. There are a lot of immediate needs and concerns that people are dealing with, a lot of anxiety about the future. There may not be a lot of motivation for folks to say, please tell me what your vision is for land use planning for the next twenty years. You know, with competing with that sort of more immediate concerns that people have. So we recognize that we may not have the quite as robust of an input process this time around. And that's yet another reason why we think it will be important to revisit this in twenty-four to thirty-six months. And then finally, we'll be presenting that draft document for discussion and adoption in December of this year. But before we leave you, I do want to talk about the census. The census, if you enjoyed this presentation, it was brought to you by the census. This information is so important for us to understand our community. It's it's really critical, but it's also critical for sort of these nuts and bolts, bolts, excuse me, nuts and bolts kinds of issues. This is how tax dollars are apportioned to our community. So this is your money. By by getting yourself counted, by going to my two thousand twenty census dot gov, it's easy, it'll take you five minutes if you haven't already finished it. Please encourage your friends and families to do so. You're bringing your money back home. And there are studies out there, it's it's not a, like every sort of formula from the federal government, it's not. Super direct and clear, but some of the analysis tells us that about fourteen hundred dollars per person per year in the state of Illinois. Comes back to us just by getting counted in the census. That's a lot of money if you think about that over a ten-year period and thinking about eighty-eight thousand plus people, right? So it's very, very important to get counted. It's important to get counted because that is how congressional representation is is apportioned, right? So your voice, our local voice in Congress is absolutely dependent on being counted in the census. That's in the constitution. That's, you know, non-negotiable, it's a it's a ten-year process. And then it also is really important to help. Identify the needs of communities for essential programs like community development block grant funding and other kinds of things. This is a map from the Census Bureau. It's their self-response map by Census Tract. And you can see the caller earlier referenced specific Census Tract numbers. I know most of us probably don't know our areas by Census Tract. But you can see that the areas in in yellow and orange are the areas that have the lowest self-response rates. So if we dig into that just a little bit more specifically. This is University Avenue and the areas in orange and dark orange are sort of the areas we think of as campus, right? So the railroad tracks to Wright Street south of University Avenue. University of Illinois group housing and Greek housing has already been counted, that's something that they they do. As a matter of practice, they provide that information directly, the university provides that information directly to the Census Bureau. We fully expect these areas to have low, lower self-response rates, they always do. These areas are always hard to count, but it's obviously compounded by the fact that people were sort of sent home on Census Day. The other thing to keep in mind and why this is so very important. Is that for the last, gosh, four months or so. We've been working with a deadline with our local Complete Count Committee and others, we've been working with a deadline of October thirty-first. And earlier this month, the White House announced that that deadline was now going to be the end of September. So a full month of of time where we have census enumerators. Who are out in our community knocking on doors, doing that follow-up, making sure people get counted, a full month just disappeared. There are some efforts in the Senate to go back to that October thirty-first deadline. Tammy, Senator Tammy Duckworth's office is working on that. I'm not sure that's going to gain traction. This is, when we look at these maps, as we all sort of know the composition of our community. Campus has the lowest response rates, but we also see low self-response rates in Beardsley Park, Garwood, Taylor Thomas MLK. At forty to fifty percent downtown Sesquicentennial, Garden Hills at fifty to sixty percent. Certainly, the White House has these figures as well. And so as we think about, you know, social justice and some of those issues. I would just encourage people, one of the simplest things you can do is go online and get counted and. Really send the message that you won't let yourself not be counted. You won't let your community not be counted. This is critically important. So please, please, please fill out your census, it's free, it's easy, it's confidential. The data is very, very important, but it's also very, very important just to document that. You exist. So please, go go fill out your census form. As weird as that is, I guess filling out your census form is like an act of protest these days. Anyway, so that is the end of our presentation and I will stop sharing. And we will entertain any questions you might have.
Any technical questions? Councilmember Bricks.
I was gonna ask you, is that just open to everybody? Even people not in Champaign, or how do you delineate who is from where? Or do you not? You just get the feedback?
With the with the survey information, we we will take information from anyone. That is a very good question. We've had. We've had some success in the past of having sort of an optional, like, can you give us your zip code? Is that are not completed. But that is certainly something that we could look at and and see if we could phrase that question a little differently perhaps. So we could at least track by zip code. We we always ask people to share their contact information if they're willing to. But sometimes that turns people off and then they don't finish the survey.
Okay, and also with the survey too, I mean, is it pretty broad where people can share? Different ideas or, you know, I don't know, I haven't seen it. And so I'm not quite sure like what what it is or what it entails.
Sure. So we have a number of sort of multiple choice, I guess you could say, questions. And then we do have a question, I think we try to keep it short. We found the shorter the better. If you actually want people to respond, go figure, although it means sometimes you don't get as much information as you'd really like. So then at the end, there is an open-ended question that sort of tell us what you think, tell us your ideas, tell us your suggestions. So we can have both kinds of things. We can have sort of the the data that's easier to aggregate. That we might be able to use a little bit more readily for kind of shaping policy in those multiple choice formats. And then the open-ended, but we could certainly add additional, I mean, if there are specific. Ideas that we're seeking, we could certainly add additional questions. The other thing that we've considered is having multiple surveys, so starting with something that's a little bit more high level. Seeing what kind of response we we get and then. Using the information that we get, we can drill down a little bit and ask more specific questions in a next survey, so keeping them short. Rather than adding too many questions to one single survey.
Okay, and then just kind of my final thing here. So in terms, well, maybe a couple things. So in terms of neighborhoods, are we asking people like what kinds of things, like what kinds? If we have neighborhood commercial businesses and things, are we asking them like what kinds of things they would want that would? Help meet some of their needs without having to travel as far or like what they're looking for?
That's a great question. We have not elected in necessarily this process to ask that question. However, we know that we're sort of on the cusp as we finish this process. To getting into sort of the update or reimagining of the neighborhood wellness planning process. Where those more sort of. Geographically targeted or neighborhood-based type of questions may be more impactful. So we're sort of thinking of this as that bigger picture. You know, like, do you utilize your neighborhood commercial center, you know, or would you? Is it is it walkable or convenient to you, that kind of thing? Where then, when we get to that next process, that's perhaps a little bit more like. Hopefully, we can do better outreach at that point, but also, you know, a little bit more tailored to specific geographies. We can ask those more specific kinds of questions. So keeping it fairly high level as far as like you're, are you using that kind of space? For the comprehensive plan and then working more specifically with individuals from neighborhoods through the next effort. If that makes any sense.
Yep, it does. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Stock.
Yeah, quick question, and you may have addressed this and I missed it, but. Does the the fact that there's not much income coming in from students, but the rents are high? How much does that, do we account for the fact that that probably skews the number a little bit in terms of housing affordability and those calculations?
That is definitely something we think about. We don't have a great way to disassociate those things because we sort of have. You could you could take out that census tract, right? Like you could completely remove those census tracts from your analysis. At the same time, they are our residents and that might not be quite fair. So one of the things that we tend to look at is. The family household versus the the roommate-style household, right? So we try to use that family household number as more of a gauge. Because it is a little bit skewed by, you know, students who somehow have little to no income. And yet have the most buying power of our entire community. So that is something we could do if we wanted to dig into that more specifically. We haven't done that, but we could certainly, from a census tract standpoint, that would be probably the only way to do it. You would still then, of course, have, you know, college students, graduate students, et cetera, who don't live in those core campus districts. But that would be one way to do that analysis, to just pull those tracts out, because they are fairly self-contained, quite honestly. So we could, we could do that. If there was an interest in doing that, we could do that.
I think it would be interesting to do it both ways to compare, to see how much does run the numbers.
Yeah, definitely. We can, we can do that and we can do that relatively easily with GIS, so we could, we could get that done.
Councilmember Gladney.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Lacey, if you covered this and I missed it, but so I I keep hearing that we are only at like sixty-five percent of census. Coverage right now. What is that based on? Is that based on our two thousand ten numbers or two thousand eighteen or what numbers are those based off of?
Sure. So actually, this response rate map, the link that I showed previously, and I can send that to you directly as well. It will actually show you if you click on the individual census tract. What the response rate is for this census, so how many people have responded. So what's called self-response for this census. It will then also tell you how many people in that tract have responded, so they may have responded through, you know, an numerator coming to their door. That's just starting in our community. And then it will also compare back to the self-response rate from twenty, from two thousand ten. So you can see all of that information just by clicking on the tract. But the data, yeah, we're at about sixty-two percent for the city of Champaign overall. And then you sort of dig into those individual tracts and some are as low as, you know, the twenty to thirty percentile on campus. Now, one thing to keep in mind, and this is the policy, but again. You have to have someone follow the policy for the policy to matter. Because we have the American Community Survey, so that is the census survey that is done on an annual ongoing basis that gives us those estimates. They're telling us anyway that we should be able to get to a reasonable. What they call the certified population number. So that's your aggregate citywide number. It gets certified, that's what's used for your tax distribution and for your congressional apportionment. Using that American Community Survey data, so let's say, for example, if you were to sort of calculate everyone now. Because I've sort of been crunching these numbers. We might have a population of sixty-five thousand people, you know, when we know that our two thousand eighteen estimate is like eighty-five thousand. Well, clearly that would be an outlier, right? Sixty-five thousand people would be an outlier. They can work their statistical magic using that survey data to say, well, actually, they were on track. We've had about one percent population growth annually since two thousand ten. They could say, we're going to take the two thousand eighteen number, or they could say, we're going to just project that out for one percent. But that's what they're telling us, that if the number is a true outlier and nation- That if the number is a true outlier and nationwide, they should be able to rely on that American Community Survey data to get to a reasonable certified population number. However, again, that's the policy, right? Like that's the policy on the books. But when those numbers are sort of certified by the Census Bureau, there will be, here's the actual numbers and here is the, the number that has been statistically analyzed and changed. So the policy is to take that number. I, I, I just, nothing is guaranteed these days, so I would just really, really encourage everyone to get counted. At the same time, we've never lost population, right? I mean, Champagne has never lost population in the history of Champagne. So to have a, a number, a certified population number that was a population loss. I think a case could be made, right, in Congress that that's frankly just inaccurate. So it, we may or may not need to conduct a special census in the future, it really depends on what happens with that. One thing that is potentially problematic, however, is that the, the margin of error. So as we want to use that data to just study our community and understand where resources are needed. You know, census data is used by everyone, we use it all the time. But even if you're filling out a grant application, the Park District calls us all the time to say, hey, we want to get a grant for this neighborhood park. Can you help us pull the census data, you know, to justify why it's needed in this area? When those margins of error are very large because people have not been counted or, or have not participated. It can make all, it just trickles down, right? It can make all of that additional work inaccurate. And, and so that's, that's certainly a concern. As, as we look at the information, but yes, that is the, they're, they're aggregating that information right now. So that is the 2020 response rate, right there, and it's updated regularly. So it's certainly worthwhile to go back and, and take a look at it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Lacey, do you want to just take a moment to talk about how the university is responding to census relating to its residence halls because they have a different process for that?
Yes, so residence halls have been counted. Residence halls were counted with the enrollment data. And so that, that move-in data from February 2020. So anything that is University of Illinois-owned dorm, a certified, you know, campus private dorm, Greek housing, any, any group housing on campus, whether it's university-owned or privately-owned, submits their numbers directly. So their residents don't ever get a census form, that just works right through, you know, the, the housing managers or the University of Illinois, tho- those students have been counted. So despite those students being counted, this is still the response rate. Now, they, they certainly have, you know, they are participating in the Complete Count Committee. You know, they're, they're doing outreach to their students to encourage them to participate. Campus is always a challenging area, response rates are always low. It's, it's made more complicated when you look at certain units that have like four bedrooms, but they have four mailboxes. Therefore, and they might have, or excuse me, they might have one mailbox, but they technically have four individuals who share. So did one person fill it out and not include their other three roommates, you know? It always makes a huge difference having the in-person enumerators on campus. All the way back to when they've been tracking this data. So the fact that we may have fewer students on campus, we may have a shorter period of time to do that in-person enumeration is really unfortunate.
Although at one point it was scheduled over spring break, so that would have been bad too.
True, true.
All right, is it, there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on the census issue or the comprehensive plan?
Madam Mayor, I see no hands raised.
All right, are there any council comments? All right, so we just need our poll and I need a second to turn to it, just a second. Which is, "Direct staff to proceed with completing the Champagne Tomorrow 2040 Comprehensive Plan with targeted updates to the Guiding Principles, Actions and Future Land Use Chapter based on input gathered through the Outreach Plan after addressing comments from Plan Commission and City Council." And I'm just gonna go across the Zoom screen as I see you. So Councilmember Bruno.
Yes.
Councilmember Beck.
Yes.
Councilmember Bricks.
Yes.
Councilmember Stock.
Yes.
Councilmember Pianfetti.
Yes.
Councilmember Gladney.
Yes.
Councilmember Kyle.
Yes.
And I am a yes, so you have direction. Thank you, Lacey, for that presentation. And I think we just need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm gonna mute.
I was gonna say, do we still have you? Councilmember Stock.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Brick.
Yes.
Bruno.
Yes.
Gladney.
Yes.
Kyles.
Yes.
Pianfetti.
Yes.
Mayor Finan. Yes, we are adjourned and we will not have a meeting next week. And I'll be hopefully taking a kid to college the week after. So I'll see you in two weeks. Good night.